Good morning and welcome to the August 27, 2019, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you are able, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, two announcements.
Announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Do supervisors have any announcements? Supervisor Mills?
Yes, just very quickly, there will be a meeting at the Sonora Opera Hall, 6:00 PM this Thursday regarding homeowners insurance. And Assemblyman Bigelow and State Senator Borges will also be in attendance. And I would encourage everyone to attend that meeting. And I know that there's another one coming up respective to our county as well. But we need to get the input out there and let them know what this is doing to us. So if you can attend that meeting, the parking is limited, so arrive early.
Thank you. I'd also like to add to that announcement that I was contacted by Assemblyman Bigelow and Senator Borges' office, and they have worked to help coordinate Department of Insurance doing a town hall in San Andreas on September 16 at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall in San Andreas. Program is still coming together. There was also a conference call on this issue late last week where they have finally collected the data and are acknowledging that we do have a problem here. And that hopefully will begin working towards some legislative solutions towards that. So again, that's September 16. And further information we post in the county, as well as I'm sure we'll all post it to our constituents, since I don't think there's any of us that aren't greatly concerned about this. So are there announcements from staff?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. Kristin Stranger, Health and Human Services. I'd just like to make the community further aware, as well as invite them to be part of two upcoming community meetings. We have to discuss the Scattered Site Emergency Shelter Pilot Project, as well as our No Place Like Home Project. So the two meetings are going to be, one this coming Thursday, the 29th of August, in West Point, at the Blue Mountain Youth and Family Coalition, right after their dinner, which begins at 5:00, and then it'll be shortly thereafter. That one will be focused solely on the Scattered Site Emergency Shelter Pilot Project, as well as the next meeting would be on September 9, 2019, at San Andreas Elementary. We're going to be discussing not only the Scattered Site Emergency Shelter Pilot Project with a multitude of partners there, but also the No Place Like Home units, and then answer questions from the community. I have released a press release to the Calaveras Enterprise early last week, so that'll be featured there, as well as we're distributing flyers and such amongst interested parties.
The last meeting, you said it was going to be where?
San Andreas Elementary School.
What timing?
5:30.
5:30?
5:30 for both of them, yes.
(inaudible)
Mm-hmm. And I will get you flyers as well, but I'm just going anywhere to who listens. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there another announcement? Other further announcements from staff? Madam Clerk?
I'd like to announce the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce State of the County Breakfast to be held on September 6, 2019, at the Metropolitan. Doors open at 7:00 AM. The event is from 7:30 till 9:00 AM. It's $35 for non-members and $30 for members, which includes a breakfast buffet. You need to RSVP by August 31st. Presale tickets only. And to purchase tickets, you can call 754-5400, or online at www-calaveras.org.
Thank you. And at that, I will be speaking, as well as CEO Alt, and we promise a wonderful duet. Maybe not Islands in the Stream, but we'll do the best we can. Yes, it'll be lovely. You have to show up to see whether we sing or dance, or do both.
(inaudible)
We'll move on with recognition and acknowledgement. Don't look so scared, Supervisor Stopper.
Item one is from Behavioral Health Services Mental Health Program. To proclaim the week of September 8 through 14, 2019, a Suicide Prevention Awareness Week in the County of Calaveras, recognizing the role of promoting awareness and resources around suicide prevention.
Thank you very much. I have a proclamation to read. So Susan, would you like me to read first, or do you want to present first?
No, you go first.
Okay. How about I present, and then when we get to the proclamation, you could take the stage, because you always got great stuff to say. So this is a proclamation. This is to proclaim the week of September 8 through 14, 2019, a Suicide Prevention Awareness Week in the County of Calaveras, recognizing the role of promoting awareness and resources around suicide prevention. Whereas September 8 through the 14th is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Week, which helps promote awareness and resources around suicide prevention. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control, suicide was the 10th leading cause of death overall in the United States, claiming the lives of more than 47,000 people in 2017, with approximately one death every 12 minutes. And between 1999 and 2016, suicide rates increased in nearly every state across age, gender, race, and ethnicity. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, for every suicide, there are 25 people who have attempted suicide. And whereas every death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community. And the Calaveras County Health and Human Services Agency, Behavioral Health Services Division, is committed to raising awareness, providing educational and training on suicide prevention, helping to reduce the stigma associated with suicide and attempted suicide. And Health and Human Services and Behavioral Health Services conducts an annual suicide prevention training that teaches how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas 540 individuals in Calaveras County received suicide prevention training in the last 12 months. And Health and Human Services and Behavioral Health Services is holding a suicide prevention training on September 12, 2019, and invites the community to participate and learn what resources are available. Are there any, is there any public comment? Susan, would you like to come up and speak?
So I have a handout which shows the information about the event, and then on the back, a list of some of the trainings we offer at no cost. Good morning, Chairman and Members of the Board. My name is Susan Sells, and I am the Mental Health Services Act Senior Department Analyst for Calaveras County Health and Human Services Agency Behavioral Health Services Division. Today, I'm here to ask you to grant a request to proclaim a week of September, from September 8 through the 14th, a Suicide Prevention Week. Suicide Prevention Week is dedicated to the role everyone in our community can play in preventing suicide, and all community members are encouraged to know the signs, find the words, and reach out to someone they are concerned about. Preventing suicide requires the efforts of many, from individual friends, families, neighbors, and coworkers, to government agencies and community organizations from a wide range of sectors. Each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, coworkers, loved ones, and often the entire community. The County of Calaveras Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Division is committed to promoting protective factors against suicide, such as access to effective behavioral health and peer support. Calaveras County Behavioral Health Services conducts ongoing and at no cost suicide prevention activities and programs throughout the year, including training. That reached last, as was mentioned, 540 persons received training just in the last 12 months. We invite everyone to attend the QPR, Suicide Prevention Training, and listen to our contractor, Mr. Baldwin, Ken Baldwin, telling his own personal story. This will be on Thursday, September 12, at the Living Room Peer Center, and the time is 11 to 1:30, and we welcome you all to come and listen in. Suicide is preventable. Please call the national hotline if you're needing to talk to someone at 1-800-273-8255, or the Calaveras County 24/7 Crisis Hotline, which is 800-499-3030. And if anyone is interested ever in receiving a QPR Suicide Prevention Training, or we also offer mental health first aid trainings. One is a one-to-two hour training, the other is an eight-hour training. We offer both of these at no cost throughout the year. You're to contact Kaby Alvarado, who is our MHSA Support Services Supervisor and arranges the trainings. And we are very flexible, so if a person, if a group wants two four-hour trainings to total the eight hours for mental health first aid, we can accommodate that. So if you're interested in holding or participating in the training, anytime this year, please call Kaby, and the phone number is on the handout I gave you. And I have additional handouts about the event that I'll leave here for the audience. Please, we respectfully ask that the Board adopt the resolution proclaiming the week of September 8 through 14 in September as the Suicide Prevention Week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Susan. Is there any public comment on this item?
(inaudible)
Seeing none. Bring it back to the Board. Is there a motion? And a second? Moved by Supervisor Callaway?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
I'm sorry, you need to call for public comment.
I did.
Oh, okay.
I interrupted you.
Therefore, be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaims the week of September 8 through September 14, 2019, a Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the County of Calaveras, and welcomes community members to take part in suicide prevention training and learn about local resources that pertain to suicide prevention. Thank you very much.[737.12][737.12](applause) Susan or Kristin, you want to come up and accept the proclamation?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
General public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you very much. I think everybody here knows the rules for public comment. You all have three minutes. If you'd like to make a public comment, come forward. Pat, lead us off.
Good morning. I wanted to address something I said last week because I noticed public comments on area newspapers that someone misunderstood what I said, and I just want to set the record straight. I was talking about the benefits of medical cannabis under strict medical supervision where youth are concerned. And with epilepsies, there's certain medicines that are very helpful that are cannabis-derived, cancer as well. And I said that there was, it was a misnomer that it's terribly harmful to children. In that context, in a medical context, it can be beneficial. I have not now nor ever advocated for recreational use in youth. I've never said that it's good for kids to use it as children. I'm all for the medical use of cannabis. I'm all for supporting the rights of adults to make choices about their lives. But I don't think that people in the regulated cannabis market are at all interested in promoting youth use, and I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Further public comment? Al?
I can jump ahead of somebody.
Nope. You're on.
Al Segal, Taxpayer Association. I have a couple items. And one of them is our Taxpayer Alert Program, a public access TV program. We've had some really interesting interviews. A recent one, actually was two segments, two half-hour segments. We interviewed Richard Velasso, who was a promoter, and he's backed by a fellow named Dennis Sanfilippo, who won the lottery some years ago and is quite an investor in the Copperopolis area. Anyway, Richard is putting together a, almost like a chamber of commerce, that's not exactly a chamber of commerce, it's to promote communication of different viewpoints in a community, and also have entertainment function. So he's going to have his first radio show, which should be broadcast from Copperopolis in September. I don't have the date right now. Anyway, there's something new, and we'll see how that works. Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association has been just a blessing for homeowners. To give you an idea of how much of a blessing, if you bought a home five years ago, you would, and Prop 13 was not in effect, you would have had to pay an additional $33,399 more in taxes. I mean, that's pretty profound. And if you owned the home since 1978, that amount would be $236,462. Those figures were compiled by the State Association of Realtors. Also, they've been fighting all along to try to preserve Prop 13, and outnumbered 15 to 1 usually. And because the people support it, they've been pretty successful in keeping it intact. The most recent success is ACA 1, ACA 1, which would have changed the Prop 13 to reduce the 2/3 to 55% under certain circumstances. And it was defeated. And it was just incredible, just a tremendous win. Another one they need help on now, same thing, this one's in the Senate, and it's SCA 5. So if you are inclined to, you might want to contact your representatives and tell them that you don't want SCA 5. Also, I got a, I'm kind of curious, I saw these cute-looking puppies up there, and I wonder, I wonder if Marita knows each of them.
Thank you very much, Al. I should have the clerk speak to what we're doing on this after public comment. Ms. Cora?
The marijuana culture in our country, the drug culture, actually, is destroying us, is turning us into a Gestapo state. And I feel very sad, because we not only are willing to drug ourselves, we're willing to ship it across the ocean and drug other people, too. And I find this horrible. I'm not saying that marijuana can't help people, but there's a lot of people running around being doctors that are prescribing things to their neighbor and other people in a desperate attempt to help them. But I have seen doctors, in the sake of repeat business, prescribing every unbelievable, sundry drug in order to please their patients, so they can get repeat business. Everybody knows that if you want to be successful in business, you, if you have repeat customers, they're your best source because they're on a regular basis. And that is what the drug culture is doing in our country. They're looking for more and more customers. I call them victims, but what they're doing, they're doing it to make money, and at the expense of our young people. And I just find it abhorrent.
Thank you very much. Is there further public comment? Arty?
Marty Crane, District 5. I wanted to thank Al for bringing up the issue of Prop 13. I retired from almost 20 years in escrow in Orange County, which is like insane, during the time when that issue came up and that was passed. And there were people who thought it was totally unfair, because, for instance, we bought a house, and the, we knew what the taxes would be because of Prop 13, so we knew that in the future, based on what our finances and our plans were, we could stay there, we could retire there should we want to. So we proceeded with that purchase. About, I don't know, 10, 12 years later, of course, the neighborhoods all changed and everything, and the economy's booming, and the taxes have gone up because it's all supply and demand before you got the Prop 13. And whenever, whenever someone purchases a house and it changes ownership, it gets reevaluated based on the current, current tax table. And so the people next door had a house exactly the same floor plan as ours, exactly. Ours taxes were 500, theirs were 1,100. And there was another house that was exactly the same floor plan as ours, and they had bought it maybe 10, 15, 20 years earlier than us, and their taxes were like $200 a year. So, but all three of these instances, they had an opportunity to make the decision based on their own personal finances and plan, retirement plan, based on that. And so there were people that came afterwards and thought it wasn't there. But you know what? They were just mad because they didn't buy earlier in that location. So in escrow, it's always location, 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 buyer beware, and you can't expect as a young person to live in the same, at the same level and in the same town as your parents when you were born, or when you graduate from high school. You have to pay your dues, you've got to live where you can afford to live, and where you can, you have the ability to take care of the property, such as we are concerned with here. And then also, there was also, as with all legislation, there is, there are loopholes. And there, there were people that were concerned about corporates, a corporate loophole. And it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the Taxpayer Association was trying to address that, because they found a loophole and they didn't have to be reassessed. But I think that might have already been resolved. Anyway, just little information. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
I'm Will Moore from Rancho Calaveras. I didn't really intend to speak, but Al brought it up. Anyhow, when my, my parents were buying a house when this Prop 13 came up, and their taxes were nearly as much as their mortgage payments, and they were all in favor of this Prop 13, and can't blame them for that. But the thing has been overdone. When that prop came up, California's school system was first in the nation. This Prop 13 thing has been overdone, like so many other things in life. And now, California's school system is number 48, down next to Mississippi, I think. So it's overdone, this whole tax cut thing has been overdone. We need the money. The governments and other agencies need the revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Madam Clerk, could you just take a second and tell everybody what's going on while, on the screens?
Sure. So in an effort to bring more visibility to, in this case, Animal Services within the county and adoptable animals, we were provided by Animal Services with a slide presentation of animals that are available for adoption. So we will be running slides during our break and our recess that will showcase these animals, and showcase other things that are happening with Animal Services, such as free rabies clinics. Because of the, our time in having to get the presentations together, there may not always be that the animals that we're showing, maybe someone will have adopted them already. However, it's always worth a call to Animal Services to see who they have there that might be a good addition to your family.
Thank you very much. And really, a great program, and thank you for helping put this together. Susan, thank you as well. The, you know, as many of you know, if you watch from home, we have a blank screen that says, out of, you know, we're on break, do we come back? And this will be shown on those screens, so people can see the wonderful pets that may be available to them. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
So the Board members, anybody want to pull an item? Seeing none. Staff? Seeing none. Public? Anybody like to pull an item? Seeing none, we will move forward with a vote. Is there any, I'm sorry, this does not happen to me. Is there a motion?
I'll move this item.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Wow. Okay, we are going to take a five-minute break and set up for our next presentation. I clean as all the staff file out the door. Very well, we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. Welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. We are on item 19. Madam Clerk?
Item 19 is from the Administrative Office to receive a presentation regarding Mountain Valley EMS agency's request for proposal for 911 Emergency Advanced Life Support Ambulance Transport Services.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli, you serve on this committee. Do you want to queue it up?
Sure. Just a short history on what's happening here. In September of next year, our contracts, the 10-year mark on the contract for ambulance service will be coming to an end. So we're sending out for requests for RFP, for new bids soliciting for that service in the county. I know that during the course of this time, there's been a lot of complaints about response times, and a lot of different issues that have to do with this. So in response to that, I've been working with Lance to change the way response times are calculated, and change the time, the way response times are done in according to population versus rural areas. That's incorporated in this item that we're about to see before us, and this is actually, if you look in your packet and you go online and you open this packet on the county website, you will see the complete RFP as it was presented to the state. Now, the state has to adopt it first before it comes back to us, because they may recommend some changes done to it that we have to incorporate into it. But I talked to Lance earlier today, and apparently the state is about to approve it. We should know tomorrow, which would mean any changes done that they require would be done, and then it would come back to us for our approval, then go out to bid. done and then it would come back to us for our approval, then go out to bid to anybody that has the proper or necessary equipment to bid on this project. And they would be fully scoped before their bid would be accepted. So I don't want to go into Lance's whole program here, but that's a synopsis of what's happening here today to us. And this is for us to look over. If we have any comments on it, any changes we would like to see, he could have those incorporated and when it comes back to us for our stamp of approval so it can go out. So I would like to turn it over to Lance Doyle, our Chief Executive Officer of Mountain Valley EMS.
Welcome.
You're good. No, you're off. You're good.
Thank you, Supervisor Toffenelli. Chairman, Chairman Garamendi, members of the board and staff. My name's Lance Doyle. I'm the executive director for the Mountain Valley EMS Agency. I'm also a resident of Calaveras County, a 15-year resident of Arnold, moved up from the Bay Area.
Yes.
One of the best decisions I've made. I am here today to present the highlights of the Calaveras County Ground Ambulance Request for Proposals. In 2014, Mountain Valley EMS Agency conducted a request for proposal process which resulted in a five-year contract with American Legion Ambulance in the North and South Zones and Ebbets Pass Fire Districts in the East Zone. Those current agreements term in 2020, so we are now back to the point where we need to produce another RFP. Per state guidelines, in a exclusive operating area that is not a grandfathered county, we can't just renew a contract. We have to go out to bid in order to produce a new contract. The Mountain Valley EMS Agency contracted with Endpoint EMS Consulting for assistance in development of the RFP. The two principals of Endpoint EMS Consulting have extensive experience both in the local EMS agency leadership roles and administrative roles and also at the provider level with one of the larger ambulance providers. We hired them for the similar process in Stanislaus County. We were very happy with their work and were pretty close to being under contract in that county, so we hired them to, to assist us up here in Calaveras County. As part of the RFP development process, multiple stakeholder meetings were conducted in order to receive input on the strengths and weaknesses of the current system as well as opportunity for potential system enhancements under a new contract. Mountain Valley convened a county leadership work group consisting of Supervisors Toffenelli and Mills, our HHS Director, and then the previous CAO who was interim at the time for general administrative direction on the RFP. From there, we met with stakeholders, including every Calaveras County Fire Agency, Mark Twain Hospital Administration and ED Management, the two current ambulance providers, and also County Sheriff and Dispatch. As a result of the stakeholder meetings, we identified five overarching strengths of the current system. Generally, the system is performing very well, especially when we put it in context of a rural system. All stakeholders have positive comments regarding both the system structure and the providers within, the current two providers within the system. All stakeholders made mention that they felt confident the current contractors provided a professional service and were dedicated to the citizens of the county. As the Director of the EMS Agency and also is confirmed through the stakeholder meeting, I'm confident the current providers provide excellent clinical care to the citizens of the county. Both have extensive clinical oversight and quality improvement processes which they monitor on a daily basis and they report up to the EMS Agency. All of the stakeholders reiterated the strong partnerships that they've developed with both of the current providers. They feel that they have an open line of communication with management and feel that concerns are addressed quickly and appropriately. That said, the system stakeholders are open to improvements within the EMS delivery system. While all agreed our current EMS system works well, we did identify some challenges that we would like to address. Many of the challenges discovered through the stakeholder meetings are not unique to Calaveras County and in fact are pretty common in other rural EMS systems. However, we do believe that a few key system enhancements will address many of the challenges that we face here in Calaveras County. Due to the rural nature of Calaveras County and a lack of specialty centers, many patients are transported to neighboring counties in the Central Valley. These are long transport times that may take up to eight or 12 hours in some instances, taking that particular unit out of the EMS system. This, on a regular basis, this could become taxing to the EMS system, the 911 system. Due to the lack of GPS tracking of ambulances, EMS Dispatch is not always able to send the closest ambulance to the call. Currently, dispatchers rely on crews reporting when they have returned to the county, have returned to their quarters, or are available in their response area. This is a verbal report given over the radio. Unfortunately, this is not always a reliable or accurate means of identifying the specific location of an ambulance in order to ensure that we are dispatching the closest unit to the incident. Employee retention is a struggle affecting all of our providers within this county and also within the state. Calaveras County unfortunately is not immune to the statewide shortage of paramedics that we've seen over the last year or two. Many EMTs and paramedics use the ground services as a career stepping stone to jobs with fire service, air ambulance providers, or potentially nursing school. Difficulty staffing qualified personnel can be exacerbated by the rural nature of our county. It is something that both of our providers do continue to struggle with. While both current providers have appropriate maintenance and capital improvement programs, the replacement of an aging fleet and modernization of equipment can be difficult in a relatively small county with a relatively limited number of calls and revenue. The current ambulance response strategy calls for a single response time standard throughout the zone regardless of population centers, location, or density. The North and South Zones, which I'll show you on a map here in a minute, have a 20-minute response time standard and the East Zone provides for a 13-minute response time standard regardless if the incident is in a population-dense area or if it's in the wilderness. The current response time requirements need updating to industry-standard, population-density-based strategy utilizing GIS mapping and call distribution. ES economics are a threat to even the largest EMS system and provider. Over the course of the past 10 years, the number of uninsured and underinsured individuals has increased, federal and private insurance reimbursement has declined, and the costs of running an EMS system continue to rise. These economic difficulties are only magnified in the rural EMS system with lower call volume, longer transports, and diminished economies of scale in comparison to some of the larger national providers. The goal of this RFP is to build an economically sustainable system for the next 10 years and all potential system enhancements must be implemented with this in mind. Currently, Mountain Valley does not have the ability to monitor response time compliance or clinical performance in a real-time manner. We rely on the provider to self-report response times and also rely on the provider for clinical personnel and patient care oversight. Dispatch radio coverage is difficult in certain areas of the county and particularly in the East Zone. Ebbets Pass Fire, the current provider in the East Zone, is not able to receive dispatch calls within its primary station one and relies on a phone call from dispatch in order to be dispatched out to a call. While dispatch is not under the purview of this RFP, we recommend a radio system assessment and plan to address the coverage difficulties throughout the county. The current fee structure for EMS dispatch places a financial burden on both providers. This is compounded in the East Zone where Ebbets Pass Fire is charged by both EMS and fire dispatch for the same call, resulting in over $80 in dispatching fees to go on calls, many of which are not insurance billable. If it's an AMA, Release It Seen, or a Lift Assist, or something of that nature, those are not billable yet, they still have to pay for dispatch fees. Again, dispatch is not under the purview of this RFP, but both Endpoint and the agency recommend a dispatch fee study to be conducted by the county down the road. Urban Islands. In rural EMS systems, we struggle with providing an appropriate timely response of what we call urban islands, which are high-population-density areas surrounded by wilderness or rural areas. In Calaveras County, our urban islands are West Point, Moke Hill, Dorrington, and Copperopolis. Again, high population densities with a long drive time from, say, San Andreas or Angels Camp or Arnold. So based on the, the system, excuse me, based on the improvements to the system and the, the areas that we thought we could benefit, we came up with a list of enhancements, again, with finances in mind and economic stability of the EMS system. So based on the challenges discovered through the stakeholder meetings and system analysis, a few select high-impact system enhancement has been written into the RFP. I believe these fiscally responsible enhancements will go a long way towards bringing the Calaveras EMS system in line with current industry standards. In fact, a few of these enhancements will bring our system to a level of clinical and response time compliant oversight that exceeds many urban areas. As mentioned, the response time standard for the North and South Zones is 20 minutes and the East Zone is currently 13 minutes regardless of where in the county the incident recurs, occurs. Mountain Valley contracted with GIS consultant and has produced population-density-based response maps with the National Grid System overlay. This will allow for appropriate population-density-based urban, suburban, rural, and wilderness response time standards. More on response times in the next couple slides, but there's a few printouts here of sample maps. They were too large to include in the PowerPoint and I can go over what these maps are here in a minute. To manage a modern EMS system status plan, GPS tracking of ambulances is needed. Mountain Valley and the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office are working together to enable ambulances to be tracked via automatic vehicle locators within the Dispatch CAD. This will be the same technology utilized by Calaveras County SO on their vehicles. In addition, mobile data terminals installed in all ambulances will allow for computerized dispatch of ambulances, which will reduce phone time for the dispatchers in the SO Dispatch Center, will allow for closest unit dispatch because now we will know where each ambulance is in real time, and will enable the responding ambulance crew to see any dispatch notes prior to their arrival on scene. Mobile data terminals will also allow for responding ambulances to communicate arrival, transporting, arrival at the hospital, and in-service times without the use of the radio, allowing for more, more accurate timestamping as well as lightening the workload on the EMS dispatchers. The First Watch Online Compliance Utility is an industry-standard, leading EMS system surveillance software package that Mountain Valley has been using in Stanislaus County for the past five years. First Watch allows for third-party verified response time compliance oversight on a per-call basis. We would not need to rely on self-reporting anymore for response time compliance. While self-reporting has been the industry norm for many years, the current industry standard is to employ independent, third-party verified monitoring. Mountain Valley has previously secured funding for First Watch in Calaveras County and is currently in the final stages of implementation into the Calaveras County SO Dispatch CAD. And we will have full First Watch functionality prior to the start of the new ambulance agreements from this RFP. We're actually hoping to be online a little bit sooner than that, but we will absolutely be ready for the new contracts. An additional surveillance platform offered by First Watch allows for complete EMS system clinical oversight through a product called FirstPass. Mountain Valley is in the process of implementing FirstPass in all of our member counties, which will allow for unprecedented, real-time clinical oversight by both the agency and the ambulance provider. This is a huge benefit in use of technology, which allows the EMS agency and the medical director to oversee calls as they happen and allows for us to expand our quality improvement, training, and that, that type of oversight. It also allows the ambulance provider a login to their own system and they'll be able to utilize the same technology for their quality improvement systems. The agreement resulting from this RFP is a five-year term with the option to extend, excuse me, extend for an additional five years. A long-term contract is the standard in the EMS industry as it encourages investment in the EMS system, provides stability to the county, and allows for long-term capital investment by the provider. One note, the RFP draft that was contained in the board packet identifies a five-year term with two options to extend for three years. That's actually in, in conflict with the Calaveras County ambulance ordinance, which indicates a maximum of a 10-year contract, which is also in line with what the state EMS authority likes to see. So we've made the change to a five-year with an option for a five-year extension. So this is a sample of the GIS mapping provided by our consultant. The National Grid System will be overlaid and then the SHAPE file, which is the core file, will be uploaded to Dispatch in order for us to track our compliance. Potentially, if needed, I may need to bring a future board agenda item to provide direction to SO to implement our response time grids and the SHAPE file. We can address that at another time. But if you look at the county here, each of those colors indicate a different population density. The darkest colors are urban. You can see those islands that we talk about. And then as you get lighter, the lightest color being wilderness, the next lightest color being rural, and then suburban is, is the fourth category.
Lance, what is the green line in, up in Mount Ranch area? I can't see those terms.
I'm not sure. It doesn't pertain necessarily to our response time compliance strategy.
Just something on there.
But you can also see the three EOAs. You have the East Zone, the South Zone, and the North Zone. And...
Did pardon? Okay. Are they cut out for a specific reason?
Smoke block.
No, flies. Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't have the answer for that. I know the audience can't see, but this map over here is the same mapping, but we put the call distribution for one year. And you can see that most of the calls, those are, each pin is a call, align pretty well with the population centers, which is fairly common for most systems. And then this map here is a close-up version of, this actually looks like the Copperopolis area, again with, no, that's not Copper, I'm sorry. Comanche, yeah. With the call distribution, but then the National Grid System overlay. And that grid system is what we actually will upload into the Sheriff CAD. There's a grid system in there now, we're just updating to the national standard. And then each of those grids is assigned a response time to automatically produce our response time compliance. Again, here's a recap of the current response times. We generally focus on code two, or excuse me, code three, which is lights and sirens. Again, 20 minutes to the North and South Zone and 13 minutes to the East Zone. So ambulance response time compliance is measured at the 90th percentile and not the average response times. In effect, 90 out of 100 calls need to be on time in order to meet compliance and anything less than 90% is considered non-compliant. The new response times are based on population density, which correlates with call distribution and frequency. The new response times ensure a more appropriate response... The new response times ensure a more appropriate response to the population centers, which experience the highest call volumes. This ensures a quicker response to the majority of calls as compared to the current response time standards. These response times have been approved by the Mountain Valley EMS Medical Director and are very similar, in fact, they're, they're identical to what we use in Amador County right now. So what you can see for our code three calls, I mean, this applies to all three counties, you will, in the code three call in an urban area, we can just pick San Andreas, okay, high population density. Right now is a twenty-minute response time. The response time now will be twelve minutes. And then for suburban, we go to twenty, which is the current response time. Rural is a thirty-minute response, and then wilderness, the industry standard is we get there as quick as we can, these are generally off-pavement, you know, four-wheel-drive or logging road type of situations, and then we actually audit each of those calls just to make sure the care was appropriate and the response time was appropriate. So we're in a unique position to address one of our urban islands in Copperopolis due to the paramedic-level service provided by the Copper Fire Protection District. The RFP encourages the proposer to enter into an ALS first-response fire agreement with Copper Fire Protection District in order to provide a shortened response time to the citizens of Copperopolis. Copper Fire Protection District is a willing partner and has committed to the proposed response times in the next slide. As part of the system status plan, Copper Fire will be held to a response time compliance standard with associated penalties if not met. The proposer will provide compensation for the services Copper Fire Protection District provides based on its cost savings in order to meet the standard twelve-minute response time. This model can be made available in the future if other fire districts are able to upgrade to paramedic-level service. So what this is, is a similar component we've taken from our Stanislaus County EMS system redesign, where we incorporate the fire district into the system status plan. Copper Fire is in Copperopolis, they can provide a much quicker response than an ambulance can. Remember, these urban islands still have high population density, but they're not large enough generally to sustain keeping an ambulance in that town. So, most providers would propose the next closest urban center is Angels Camp. Well, Angels Camp to Copper would not, you would not be able to meet the twelve-minute response time compliance, so what we've done is incorporated Copper Fire, they've committed to a ten-minute response with a paramedic, same level of service that the ambulance provider serves, and that will give the ground ambulance proposer, provider, an additional four minutes to get to that call. So we get a quicker response to the patient with the same level of service, and financially, it's a little bit more sustainable model because to require an ambulance, an ambulance twenty-four-seventy is generally about a million point four dol, one point four million dollars a year, and we just don't have the call volume in Copper to sustain that. So a joint agreement between the Fire Protection District and the ambulance will, will actually accomplish a better goal, plus it provides an opportunity for the fire district to see a, a new revenue stream that they hadn't seen before. So our next steps. The RFP is currently at the state EMS authority for approval, all of these RFPs must be approved by the state EMS authority. I was actually there yesterday to kind of nudge him along a little bit on this RFP, they've had it for five-plus weeks, and funny, he said it'll be ready tomorrow, so, it was a worthwhile trip. I'm told Wednesday, I'm thinking by the end of the week, hopefully we'll have approval from the EMS authority. I've already been told what the, the changes that need to be made, and it's just one, it was the term of the contract, which we already aligned with our county ordinance. Once approved, I take the RFP to my JPA board for presentation and final approval, then we will release the document. Hopefully, that'll happen next week potentially, which will keep us on track. And then proposals will be due in late November, early December, depending on when we actually release the RFP, with a notice of intent toward by the end of the year. And those dates are a little flexible depending on if, if the state drags their feet a little bit, but I'm pretty confident after my meeting yesterday. Thank you, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from the board? Reserve Callman?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Under the system, let's start, the, with Copper?
Yes.
Or whoever, whatever the fire district, how is the client billed? They're billed by the respective fire department, plus they're billed by the ambulance service?
So, in the state of California, your billing for EMS calls comes from the transporting agency, so it would be the same as it is now, it would be billed by the winning proposer. And then, the winning proposer, in order, in order to abide by antitrust issues and anti-kickback, the proposer needs to figure out basically how much they're saving by entering into an agreement with Copper Fire, and then they would break that down to a per-call basis, and then we would, the, the proposer would pay Copper Fire per call, and this would be known in a contract well ahead of actually running calls. So the billing entity would be the ambulance provider. There are mechanisms through the fire departments to bill, not necessarily insurance, but there's GEMT and a couple other instances where they might be able to bill separately, but that would also be available to them right now.
So, the ALS can get there first?
Uh huh.
So, when a call, when a call's dispatched, though, does it say, okay, ALS, you go first, and ambulance, you don't have to, or they're both going at the same time?
Same time. They're dispatched at the same time, just like it is today.
Right. So, then ALS gets there first? I'm, I'm trying to understand the financial equation to this, so that the public understands.
So, the...
And me too.
The financial model that would be offered to the fire provider is one hundred percent based on the proposer's cost savings for, between them doing, sort of taking the service on themselves versus a partnership, and that will be different for every provider. We don't dictate what that arrangement looks like, so, just in very broad terms, in order to meet a, a twelve-minute response time in Copper, in Copperopolis, you would need to station an ambulance in Copperopolis, because you can't make it from Angels Camp to Copper reliably ninety percent of the time in twelve minutes. So, if I'm a proposing ambulance provider, I'm going to say, okay, well, that costs me one point four million dollars a year for a twenty-four-hour car, I might not need a twenty-four, whatever it might be, if I decide that contracting with Fire saves me twenty dollars a call in fines for non-compliance, in having to put a, a car there. If, if it averages to twenty dollars a call, that it saves me as the provider, then I can go to the fire district and enter into an agreement to pay them twenty dollars per call. So, that gets us a quicker response to the patient because the fire agency is located in Copperopolis, and they, through meetings with, with Copper Fire, they've said, I can get to anywhere in my response district, any of that urban area, urban island, in ten minutes. That's better than if we just left it up to the ambulance provider. So it's a benefit for the community, it's a benefit for the fire agency because of the revenue stream, and it benefits the ambulance provider because they get some help, if you will, with that hard-to-reach area.
Okay, I want to move to response time, if I understand, there'll be a different standard for urban, suburban, rural, and so forth. So is it First Watch, I wasn't clear who's going to be monitoring that, because you said it's a self-reporting system, and, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So, as we sit today, and as was the standard when this contract was written, we would rely on the self-reporting from the ambulance provider. So right now, we get a report from the ambulance provider, says, we ran four hundred calls, and we were late on twenty, and our compliance is ninety-two percent, right? We're relying on the provider to self-report, and that was the industry standard up until First Watch, that's what we did in Stanislaus County as well, but things have changed, and now we have technology that allows us to independently monitor those response times automatically through integration into the CAD, because when a call is dispatched, let's say it's dispatched at ten o'clock, the ambulance gets there at ten oh eight, they call Dispatch and say, I'm on scene, so there's a timestamp in the CAD, we pull that information from the CAD, so now we don't rely on the self-reporting, right? We are getting the raw data from the CAD. We contract with First Watch, we manage the interface, First Watch is, is the company that produces the surveillance software.
So if a ALS or an ambulance doesn't meet that twelve minutes, is there like a cutoff and they're fined, or what is the ramification?
So there's a couple ramifications, and I didn't put a slide together on it, but it is in the draft RFP. So we look at, we don't look at each call individually, we look at a response period, which generally is a month. So for that month, if a provider is, let's just say ninety-one percent compliant, great, they met their contractual obligation, even though there might have been, you know, three, four, or five calls where they weren't compliant, overall, they met the ninety percent standard. If, at the end of the month, or the compliance period, they're eighty-nine percent compliant, they missed that ninety percent, then there's a penalty structure that kicks in, they are fined, and then if they are non-compliant more than three, three times, three months in a row, or more than six times in a twelve-month period, then they're in breach of contract, and then we have other options available to correct the, correct the breach.
Okay, moving on to another one. You talked about FirstPass?
Yes.
And I thought I heard you say, the docs are on the calls as they happen? I wasn't clear what that meant. Are they talking to the staff of the ambulance or the paramedic wagon?
The docs are on the call?
The docs, the docs, the medical team.
No, I'm sorry, I must not have been clear, so...
So, I wasn't clear how FirstPass worked, because you said the, something about the calls as they happen?
Yes, yes.
I didn't know what that meant. Who's talking to whom about what?
Okay, so, we're using, so FirstPass is a clinical component made by First Watch, and I would love at some point in the future to come in and give you a full presentation on what both of those do. However, the FirstPass is the clinical component, so we look, we, we, the medical director would go in and set up different types of calls they want to look at, and in general, what we do is we input our treatment protocols into FirstPass. Every time a, a paramedic runs a call, they do their PCR, and then they hit upload, which they have to do within two hours of a call, it goes into FirstPass, and it looks at, this is all automate, automated through technology, it looks at compliance to the protocol. If it's compliant, great, we don't look at it, right? But if something falls out in that, I don't know, they didn't give a medication, or they gave too much of a medication, it will flag that call so that the provider's clinical people can look at the call and provide remediation or what have you. It will also aggregate all those types of calls through the whole system that our clinical staff can look at the compliance to these different protocols. So it's an automated system, and it happens, I said, real time, it's really after the paramedic uploads their PCR, so there's not any doctor involvement, the medical director can look at these as they pop up, they would give you a, you know, an alert in your email.
But it's af, it's, if I heard you correctly, it's post the fact that it's happening, not during the time that it's happening?
No, not during the call, no. No, we have, I'm sorry if I'm getting off topic.
No, no, no.
We have standard protocols as, as approved by our medical director that the paramedics in the field follow, and then we have clinical staffing, both at the EMS agency and at the provider, and it does have to be retrospective, you can't be there side-by-side, but that's where training and education and certification comes in, that we sign off that these paramedics are able to follow our protocols. So, we assume that they are following the protocols, this gives us a method to confirm.
So how does that protocol dovetail with the respective hospitals?
So, the protocols don't necessarily integrate with the hospitals in general, these are pre-hospital treatments. So as an example, a patient calls for chest pain, when we get there, we have a chest pain protocol, they treat the patient per those protocols, and they transport that patient to the appropriate hospital. Once we transfer care at the hospital, the hospital has their own set of protocols.
Okay. The, the term of the contract, five-year plus a five-year, and you had mentioned what it currently is, is five plus five, three times? Whatever it is, it is now that you have to change?
Yes.
Is that something that the EMS board wants, and our providers want, and if it's a county ordinance that says we can't, should we change the county ordinance, or is it the state saying you can't?
So, this would be a big can of worms, we'd get into a long discussion about, there's some turmoil at the state over what authority they actually have to dictate the length of a contract. Traditionally, they've, they've set a maximum contract of ten years, that's what the feedback was they gave me yesterday in the, in our meeting, which I had already changed the RFP because the, or our ordinance says ten years, they would push back if we wanted to do a contract any longer than ten years.
So it's, so what? I meant, I mean, ten years, considering it's a very expensive system, is not very long.
Absolutely.
So what control does a respective county or the EMS board have in keeping what it is your board is recommending?
So, this...
Or it's not worth the fight?
There's been other counties that have been through this, where their board has said, we want a fifteen-year contract, and the EMS agency has always said, no, we don't approve of your RFP. Some of them have gone to litigation. Again, we're in a little bit of a time of turmoil with the EMS agency, I guess my, my short answer would be, it would potentially open us up to the state saying, if we move forward with, let's just say, a fifteen-year, the state saying, well, we didn't approve that RFP, and there could be potential consequences for that. What those consequences are, I, I don't really know. Ten years is the industry standard, if that helps?
I mean, I heard you say that.
And we're coming off a five-year.
Yeah, I know, I, so are we coming off our second five-year?
No, this, this last contract was only a five-year, there was not an opportunity for renewal.
So is this the renewal time?
No, we're in, we're in the original five-year contract.
Okay, that's what we're going?
Yeah, the current contract, this board before my time, had asked for a five-year agreement, we're in that five-year agreement that started in twenty fifteen, and now we're looking at twenty fifteen to twenty, twenty-five.
So we're looking at the second five years? The five-year, we're in our first five-year, and we're moving into our second five-year, is that?
No, we're looking at a new contract.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, new contract.
That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reserve Nelson? Lance, you, I was trying to get in the middle of it, you had used an acronym, PCR, Patient Care Report.
I'm sorry, just wanted to bring that up, sorry.
I'm going to give away my time in service here, the person who trained me on an ambulance was Steve Kovacs, so we're going back a long ways. My question would be regarding Copper Fire, is how long is it going to take to get an agreement, or, you know, to get some number put together that agreement can be reached with Copper Fire, you know, is this something that's going to take a year? Will it only take six months once it's approved, you know, how quickly can? how quickly can the EMS agency assist in, in getting that number put together so they can actually get it into their budget?
So I'm finalizing our, our templates, if you will, for the same relationship, the first responder fire agreement in Stanislaus County. I've got, I think, 13 of them down there. That template will have already been approved by our council. So it would be just a matter of inputting the specific scope of work and business language. It would be in place well before the start of this contract. It's not a heavy lift.
Well, I can, I can certainly tell you that Endpoint provided exemplary background and an understanding of our challenges that we face up here, which are to some degree unique because of terrain, et cetera. So I was very appreciative of them listening to all of the input that they took in and then trying to make those necessary adjustments. Yes, the, the two things that really kind of think reached out was the duplication of dispatch and the, the coverage on radios. And if we can take those up as separate items afterwards, it'd be very valuable for everybody in terms of, and, and having them with the GPS locators is critical. Oftentimes, we lose track of them simply because of terrain. And having that onboard now with satellites, it's very easy to keep track of where they are. And it will also be a safety issue for them. We know where they are if something happens and they're delayed. So I want to thank you and the team for all that you've put in and making this work. And I, I see a very successful future for whoever accepts this contract and is willing to run with it.
Thank you. Supervisor Calhoun?
Yeah, I have one more. On the cost of dispatch.
Yes.
So will the, I'm not sure. So in Ebbets Pass, they have to pay EMS and they have to pay the county for that same phone call. That seems a little overkill.
So Ebbets Pass is a unique position. And I know Chief Johnson's here if he, if he wants to speak to it or correct me when I'm not accurate. But because they're a fire agency, they get dispatched to medical calls through their fire dispatch, which is CalFire right over here. But then because they're also the ambulance provider, they get dispatched from the approved EMS dispatch center, which is the Calvers SO.
So will that happen to Copper? Will they have to double down and pay-
No, because Copper, no, because Copper's not a transporting EMS agency. So their dispatch would only be through CalFire as it is today.
So that doesn't seem fair that Ebbets Pass has to pay twice. I don't know, if the chief says, "Get off the boat, Marie," I will, but, yes, go ahead.
All right. Hey, it's great to see everybody and thank you for giving me a moment. We are in a unique position with being a contracted ambulance provider and we accept the responsibilities that include the primary PSAP dispatch center, which is your sheriff's office, which is the primary medical call taker for that type of work. And we also are the fire agency, which we're, you know, it's a pleasure to, you know, have the Calaveras County support financially to help offset the ECC costs over at CalFire for our, all of our fire and medical on that side. So in reality is, is we're accepting that dual responsibility of an ambulance. You know, we elect to bid on our zone. We don't have to. And along with that, we understand comes certain costs. Although there is a redundancy in a fee for some services because we're using the ECC heavily, just like all the other fire agencies for all the medical side, as well as getting released through the, that call's being pushed over from one dispatch center to the other. So while we accept some of those things, I think the, I haven't seen the RFP because it hasn't come yet. But when it does, we would enjoy a opportunity to work independently as a contractor, if awarded the E-zone, with the sheriff's office to find that middle ground with the dispatch service, married with what we're getting, to eliminate redundancy and essentially eliminate a, a cost that would be, you know, a savings to the constituents that has said, "Hey, yeah, you're going out on a call from one side. It's being managed heavily on one side or the other. That's proportionate to whatever is being done." If it results in a ambulance transport where we indeed have a, a fee or an insurance payment coming back, maybe that could be part of it. But I guess you would say that the details itself, we would appreciate to sit down and work through that with, if awarded the, the E-zone for, for the ambulance contract, just to say, "Hey, this is what we're getting. This is the output. Where can we work together to make sure we're, we're in line?" You know, so if that makes sense.
Does to me.
Okay.
And just to be clear, the, the, the county has approved Calvers SO as the EMS dispatch center and they do a fantastic job. They've made significant upgrades over the years there. We are not a party to that agreement, but we stipulate in the RFP, based on board direction, that Calvers County SO is our dispatch center.
We are going to continue this conversation. I know I have questions. I think Supervisor Mills had questions and we have some public comment to add in. Supervisor Toffenel?
It's fine.
So we will return at 10:35. Thank you. Welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. We are continuing our discussion on EMS. Supervisor Toffenel, you had some questions or?
Dennis waved me off. No? Yeah. My questions have to do, Lance, with the automatic vehicle locator. And what we currently do, as you mentioned, is if a ambulance picks somebody up and transports them to a hospital and they're discharged to the hospital, then on their way back, we don't have any use of that vehicle or use of that ambulance until they check in. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. However, if it's an in-county transport, like we go to Mark Twain, usually as soon as they transfer patient care and they get back in their ambulance, they'll go on the radio and make themselves available.
So if they're available at that time, then we can dispatch them immediately from that hospital. But if they transport from the Copper area to, to Modesto, we have to wait until they contact us and, and they're in the county before we can discharge them to another spot if there's another call.
Correct. What would normally happen is the ambulance would transport, let's just pick a hospital in Modesto, and they transfer the care of the patient and then they drive back. Usually, as soon as they hit the county line, they should be going available in the region. But we don't have, as we are today, we're reliant on them to report, right? And then as they make their way back to their zone, we don't really know where they are. So we'll get them at the county line and then we might not hear from them until they get to, let's just say, Angels Camp. But if there's a call in the middle there, I mean, we're going to assume they're on that route of travel, but we don't know how close and so on and so forth.
So they may or may not be discharged to that call based on that information. We don't really know where they're at.
Correct. And maybe a better example would be if they're on their way through Copper up Highway 4 to Angels Camp and they get a call in Angels Camp, we don't have a visual to say, "Well, they're closer" or "The San Andreas car is closer."
Correct.
With AVL, we'll know exactly who is closer and we can dispatch the closest ambulance.
And that was my point. The AVL will know exactly where they're at, you know, at all times. And if they're closer to a call that comes in, we can immediately dispatch them on their way back. That, we haven't had that capability necessarily in prior years. So coming into this contract, everything will be online and we will be able to implement that, which hopefully will increase our responses and limit, and possibly see times that are very, very close to 98, 99% during the, the month that we're, we're tracking for their calls and being compliant and so on. I think that will make a lot of people happy. So that was my only questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lance, I got three questions for you. First off, how would this RFP have any, will have any impact on our general fund and will increase costs or decrease costs to the county? Maybe that's a CIO question, but-
There's no cost to the county of the RFP.
Thank you. And for the services, how do we generally, does the county pay, how does, how are these generally paid?
Fee for service. The ambulance provider charges for the ambulance ride, yes.
Thank you. We are going into the PSPS, which I'm sure everybody's talking about. How will the ambulance services be a integral part of our dealing with that? We've got a lot of vulnerable population, especially in some of our, not just urban islands, but suburban areas. Will EMS and the ambulance service be providing services and sort of how are you integrating with our overall system?
So as an EMS agency, and actually the current ambulance providers are also involved in the county work groups, emergency preparedness, coalition, where a lot of the PSPS planning has happened. We are involved as an EMS agency from an oversight perspective. We have a, without getting too far in the weeds, we have a medical health operation coordinator program, which is really a coordinator for, for mutual aid services. So for instance, and this is where we get involved with the PSPS is, let's say the hospital has to evacuate because they have no power and they run out of diesel or their generator breaks. We, as EMS agency, would coordinate transport of that, you know, fairly large number of patients through multiple providers because our two providers probably couldn't cover or provide enough ambulance service for, say, 25 people all at once. So we coordinate from Amador County, Stanislaus County, Topeka County to help with that. The actual ambulance providers have been in all of the planning sessions at the coalitions and we've all done the, our needs assessments, if you will, and how it might impact, a PSPS might impact emergency medical services. And yes, just like in the Butte Fire, both ambulance providers were very active and stepped up to help evacuate vulnerable citizens, whether or not it was a billable transport. It was community service and they were both very active in helping.
Thank you. I know that's going to be a major concern when it happens and how broad it is. We'll definitely limit the amount of resources that you'll have available to dispatch. My last question is, you get these maps with the urban islands. Urban islands are going to be required to have an 12-minute response. How will you serve West Point in 12 minutes, considering it's a solid 40-minute drive from San Andreas?
So that's one of the difficulties we have with the urban islands. What we have, and I apologize, I should have put in the presentation, we've developed a policy, and this is the policy we have in place today, that those are dedicated, they're, they're flagged as hard-to-reach areas. Under today's 20-minute response time, it's really not an issue because they're served within that response time. I know American Legion hits West Point from Pine Grove. Under the new response time scenarios, those urban islands, if they don't have an option like with Copperopolis Fire, those are going to be categories, categorized as a suburban response. So they would retain the 20-minute response times. They unfortunately would not be able to get to 12 minutes. That would just, it'd be unsustainable financially.
And who, who makes that decision?
It's an EMS agency decision. We consult with our medical director. We look at what we're doing today as practice. And that's how we came up with that determination.
Thank you. Well, I certainly, you know, obviously, it is by population base and need according to your maps in an urban island. I would hate, just because it's hard to do, that we decide just to downgrade them to a suburban and say, "Well, we can't do it, therefore, we're making you less than other urban areas." That would be a major concern of mine and I hope we do not do that. And if you do, you should let me know in advance. I want to make sure that, you know, one of the other islands, problems I've got with, concerns I have about West Point is, as you are aware, we, I think we discussed this back in, on February 14th of this year, we lost Highway 26. And we were about to, going up the hill, we were about to lose Highway 26 going to Amador County. So suddenly I was going to have a urban island that was truly an island and inaccessible. How will we deal with that when that inevitably happens again?
So this year, we were fortunate in that we still had a way in through Amador. My understanding is American Legion actually moved their unit closer to, to West Point. We faced this situation, actually back before I moved here, but I want to say it was 1997 up on Highway 4 where we had the Ramsey Slide. And what we ended up doing there was getting a crew to the other side and then we would transfer the patient. We used air resources if needed. That's one of the difficulties of, of a rural and really a mountainous wilderness county is you sometimes need to think out of the box. And fortunately, both of our providers are really good at that. I know one of our providers, well, they all have four-wheel-drive ambulances, which is a requirement in the RFP. One of our providers has a side-by-side for the wilderness. They have tracks. So we get creative. And I know both of these ambulance providers today, and I would hope if there's a change in providers, it would be the same, are very willing to help each other. That's something we would coordinate as the EMS agency. So it would really just depend on the particular scenario and how we need to address it. But we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's on the front of your mind.
Yeah.
Because be it fire or floods.
Yep.
People can be stranded and hurt. So I want to make sure that, that's on your mind as well as the other issue. And when we cross those bridges, we'll discuss them together.
Yes.
Supervisor Mills, you had one more que, you had another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up. The uniqueness of Ebbets Pass and Copperopolis is because the voters in those two districts made the choice to financially support their EMS programs. And it's not cheap, but they do see the importance and the need for it. So it's, it's something that any fire district could choose to do if they want to. It's just that these two districts have chosen to do it and their voters have unanimously, year over year, supported the costs that are involved with doing it. And I'm sure that that has contributed to the overall complexity of this whole situation. But at the same time, it provides a unique level of service that probably would not be available if it wasn't for those two districts stepping up like they did.
All right. Thank you. If there's no further questions from the board, I'll move it to public comment. Anybody like to speak to these issues? Marty?
On that note, I recall a few years ago, Calaveras Consolidated came here and wanted to talk about their zone so that they could go to the voters and do exactly what was so wonderful about what happened in Ebbets Pass and they were told, "No." So there's that. I also wanted to say that, I wanted to ask, are you, have you reached out to Calaveras Consolidated like you have Copper? West Point's in Calaveras Consolidated, in that big zone, I think. Anyway, they can't seem to get up there because the zone's too big. But anyway, there's, I don't want to talk about that today. I just want you to look at it, if you would please. So the Volunteer Center has had a volunteer driver program since the early 1980s, taking residents to doctors and life-sustaining appointments at no cost to the taxpayer since the early 80s. For dialysis patients, there are no clinics in Calaveras. Now, we've been talking this morning about sending an ambulance to pick someone up, take them to the hospital and get them back on their feet and give them a chance at a quality of life, right? But for a dialysis patient, it's a whole different story. Patients travel an hour one way and then sit in a recliner for two to five or six hours and their quality of life is a real concern. Patients, they want some sort, some sense of normalcy, which is not supported by having an ambulance or a cancer van come to their home two to three to four, five times, two times a day, three, four, or five times a week. The Volunteer Center, we struggled to find a solution when calls would come in saying, "Now, we all know," or maybe we don't, "That if you don't do dialysis, you die very quickly. It's not painful. You just go to sleep, but you die. So you have to do dialysis. You have to make that choice one way or the other." And so we struggled to find a solution for, for these calls to dialysis transportation for years. So we put teams together. Whenever anybody would call, we would put a team together of volunteers to take them down, drop them off, because the volunteers, it gets, it's a little intensive when a volunteer goes. They're living that, that dialysis life- They're living that, that dialysis life as well, if they go every day or three times a week and sit there for five hours, or you can only go shopping so many times in a week in, in Lodi or Stockton or whatever. You know, I'm going to run out of time. This is so critically important. I need to, please.
Marty?
No, I, okay, so there's, what we're doing is we are denying small mom-and-pop operations. The Silver Streak, we heard that, they, they said, from people that call us, they don't go out of county, they don't do dialysis. They, oh, they can drop me off for $100. Well, you know, these people are just going to die, you know?
Marty, thank you.
Gary, I, I want to give this to Gary.
You could give it to the clerk, Marty.
And please address it. I gave, I called you three times.
Will, you're up.
This is critical to this.
Marty, I do not dispute, dispute that a bit.
I'm Will Moore from Rancho Calaveras, and I think my comment is more of a question than a comment. I'm puzzled by the name "agency." You know, Central Intelligence Agency is an agency of the government. Their head office building in Langley, Virginia is a government building. The people who work there are government employees, salaried employees. I don't know what a Mountain Valley agency is. Is this, it's not a government bureaucracy, and I guess maybe it's a business, but I don't know. I don't know who's paying for it, or I don't know how it fits into the government situation. Is that a question?
Thank you, Will. Next public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Lance, anything you want to close with, or rebuttal you want to, answers you want to?
I could address the agency question if you would like.
If you could do it briefly, that'd be great.
Okay. So to address your question, Mr. Moore, the State of California has the EMS authority, which is tasked with overseeing all emergency medical systems, everything from dispatch to the ambulance providers, to the air providers, to the, the emergency rooms. Every county within the state has to have a local EMS agency, Emergency Medical Services Agency, responsible for overseeing the local agency. Calaveras County, along with Amador, Alpine, Stanislaus, and Mariposa County, have entered into a joint powers authority to delegate the management and the oversight of the EMS system to our agency. So we're a JPA, quasi-governmental, and we are tasked with overseeing the EMS agencies for our, the member counties.
Lance, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the board for all this work, and I'd like to thank Supervisor Mills, Supervisor Toffenelli for their continual work on this committee. If there's no further questions from the board.
Can you answer my question, please?
Marty?
I ask a question, you're not going to answer it?
Marty?
I'll answer this time, too.
We will stick around, Will Lance. We'll talk to you after this, okay?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Very well. And I'd like to thank you. This is just an informational item, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on to supervisor announcements.
In compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Calloway, would you like to lead off today?
I attended no meetings for the expense of the county.
Thank you, Supervisor Mills.
Yes, it was Wednesday the 14th, down to the GSA meeting in Stockton. Please remember that the plan is out for public review and comment, and hopefully each supervisor will have a chance to look at it before we make a decision on that in November or December. Thursday, the 15th, did go to look at the annual report and actually got a copy of it from American Legion in Jackson at their luncheon. Wednesday, the 21st, we did have the unique opportunity with John, who walked out of the room, to tour the spillway at New Maloney's, along with a state geologist, who is going to come back and do some additional work on that site, just to confirm that the spillway is indeed not in Orville and that the communities below New Maloney's are indeed safe. Had a camera meeting, which you and I attended that same day. And Saturday, the 24th, was asked to attend the Farm Bureau barbecue out at the fairgrounds, which I was very, very pleased to see the number of young people that are involved in our ag community here and their level of involvement. And I've been meeting on the Monday mornings at the Copper Valley Cafe in Copperopolis to talk to constituents, and it's been good conversations so far. And then also, I don't know if anybody noticed it, but the Bearcat arrived yesterday as I was driving out of the parking lot, so I had to get a picture of it. So the Sheriff's Department's new Bearcat is here. How long it's going to take them to get up and operational with it is a question, but they're very thrilled to see it, as am I. That's all I have.
Supervisor Stopper?
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I have nothing to report. I attended a Mountain Valley EMS meeting last week, but nothing that I charge a county for, so nothing to report.
Thank you. I have nothing to report as well, but I did forgot, forget to announce to you all and invite you all. Lumberjack Days is the first Saturday in October up in West Point. It is a great time. Please attend if you can. Hopefully, we'll be opening, reopening the county's building up there, which we're doing some remodeling on. And I'd love to have you all there for ribbon cutting. And if you drive all the way to West Point, bring a sign and put it on the side of your car and ride in the parade with us.
You buy them lunch?
I will buy you lunch if you come up. We'll go to the, we'll go to the Lions Club and get a brat together from the stand. Announcements from staff? Nothing? Madam Clerk? Very well, we stand adjourned.